And I call to all of the Mont Pleasant Public School Board of Education to have a meeting on October 1st, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the Mont Pleasant High School. This meeting with the Mont Pleasant Public Schools Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public and is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated by the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that requires action by the board. These items may include those discussed at previous meetings or presented to the board for discussion. As a co-adjutor, please turn off a sound for yourself and be able to have our attention.
And to the citizens, to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This conference will be at Mont Pleasant, our additionist of the non-state. Mont Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the initial people whose traditional memory began to dawn. To recognize the initiative of the people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation. And we have honored the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since the memorial and whose land of which the Saginaw Circle One D tribe has decided to us continue to reside on this land. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. We will do our local. Any questions? Will you take over here?
Ladies and gentlemen, here. Tim Boykert.
Jessica Turner here. Katie Reed here. Thank you.
Um, sorry, not according order. Uh, we also are at the meet the headers of our educational governance units, which as board members we agreed to in January 2024. If you like the full text of what those headers stand for, we have fully printed copies on the table. As board members, we committed to the following professionalism, respect, and equity, inclusive collaboration, responsibility to afford your position, dedication to community agreement engagement side, and commitment to continue as well. That's where the vocal. And next we have to approve our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve it?
Before we do, can we refer to one more?
Absolutely.
Under new business, underneath SEAB section, advisory board recommendation for final augmentation, can we add equipment of student representative to the board?
Do I have a motion to approve this change?
Still move.
Second. One paper.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have a Board of Education representative report. We have a.
It's me, Erin. You're welcome. So as we know, my name is Addie Gardens. I'm a senior here at Mont Pleasant High School. I'm also a captain of the cheer team that we have here, which I just read over the practice. But other than being on the cheer team here, I'm also on Mont Pleasant. I'm also on Mont Pleasant High School's Eboard. So my job is to go out to you guys and basically give you a rundown of what's happening here. So a list of things that my leader Miss Bush wanted me to discuss today was how the school year started. And basically, what I want to talk about that is that our info policy that was put in this year has been going really, really good. I've heard from a lot of teachers making really good improvements in our school and that it's definitely like engaging more kids. Obviously, not everyone's perfect. Not every class is going to be 100%, but it's just like something that has helped the school. And two other things that I just want to mention quick about updates on the school year since there's not really much to give since we're only like two months into the school year, but it's about our GR Tech Facebook page. And I definitely get a lot of information on what's going on in the GR Tech since I'm also a co-op here in the GR Tech offices. And then our Senate Instagram page that I also run as the VP of Educational Communications on our Eboard. So our Senate page or our GR Tech Facebook is where you can find most of the updates along with our Mont Pleasant Public Schools Facebook page. So one big event that we were so late to happen was our homecoming here. And based on personal experience, since I was one of the members on court this year, I think homecoming went very, very soon. Our halftime was a lot smoother than it has been in the last couple of years at our game. And then our parade and just everything was so smooth. And me personally, and I know Miss Wishmeyer wanted to thank everyone who was here that participated in our parade or who had any involvement in any disorder way. Thank you. And then the last thing that I want to talk about was our assembly with homecoming. And I think our assembly went super, super good. It was great to have Mr. Clark working on everything like that and having him and everyone involved with that. And next topic that I wanted to talk about was our athletics here at Mont Pleasant High School. Obviously, there is not much to say since it's just the fall. But as our football season is wrapping up, that has been going pretty well. We're hoping to make the playoffs this year. And another big thing that we started this year was something called student section leaders. So basically, our student section leaders are two individuals at Mont Pleasant High School. There's a boy, Rob Byner, and a girl, Elia Leon, who basically just make sure like everyone's being appropriate in the student section, making sure like students are showing up, getting involved, and just making sure everything is fun and exciting in our student section and at sports games. Um, the next, I have two more topics to discuss with you guys today. First, the first one is going to be our admin lunches that we're doing. We recently just had our first admin lunch with Mr. Winkler, our president, which one of our Senate members attended with her. And just basically just talked about what I'm talking about with you guys today here at school. Just what's going on, what we want to fix things. And the big things we advocate for is like how people like are getting involved with that and how people are signing up for that if they want or if they don't. There is a thing that I will be posting out. It's like the week of every admin lunch that I'll be posting on our Senate Instagram page, on our story, a Google Doc that people can slide up and basically just fill it out and get their thoughts heard through our students and through our principals, such as Miss Davis and my teacher. And then a big thing that wants to be noted is that all of our Eboard members, including myself, are required to sign up for admin lunch so we really can get some good representation of our school and make sure everyone is heard in the correct way. And the last thing, which is definitely most exciting for me, is what to be excited for with these next few months or always until close to the end of the school year. But the first one is just this Friday, we're having a big pink cafe at Mont Pleasant High School where everyone's going to show up when we're pink. I know my business management class for one of our special projects we're working right now is where we can like a thousand little pink women for people who are on their shirts at school or to the game or literally anywhere just to support a great cause. So the whole school of Mont Pleasant has been basically ordered the lights then instructed to wear pink to.
Courage.
Yes, encourage the word that I have formed here to wear pink to support that great cause I'm threatening. And then two more things that are much later in the year, but our goods management team here at Mont Pleasant High School is working very hard on is our snowball in January. Now the homecoming is over. That is our next big event here, next dance that we're looking forward to. And one thing to be super excited for is a new event that we have called Spring Fling this year. It's another school dance, just like our snowball is, just to give students something to look forward to in that like month of, I'm pretty sure Miss Wish said that's going to be some kind of ankle in that big long period where students don't really have much to look forward to, to keep them going, keep them excited. So we want to maybe give them something to stay motivated and something to look forward to here.
Is there any questions that we can answer?
What's the handle for the Senate Instagram?
Can you look at the username on how to find it? It's just @phs, no spaces, no caps.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Next we have a surprise. Good evening, everyone. I've got a few items on our report this evening. First off, we will start with our annual financial audit presentation. I want to introduce to Jamie Rabet from Yo and Yo to present our audit. Jamie, thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. So you all have a captain in front of you and I'll touch base with what you have in front of you. And then I'll let you know, we just just go with the highlights. So we don't have to spend all night going through the big financial statements. But you're going to have a landscape version copy that looks like this. This is the audited financial statement. There's probably a couple of loose letters in the front of that too that I just wanted to point out. So one of them is a governance letter. I do encourage you to read that single and it's in Yo and Yo's letterhead. And then the other bound copy says a single audit. So this has all your financial federal grants are included in here. So this is strictly federal grants related and it has the schedule of here, which I'm going to touch on too as we go through the PowerPoint. So a couple of familiar faces, some new faces. My name is Ginger Rabet. I'm an audit partner with Yo and Yo CPAs. And I had the pleasure of in-charging your audit this year. And we'll go ahead and get started as we go to the page two. Um, this really talks about what you are looking for from us. So MDE requires all the schools in the state of Michigan to have an annual audit done and performed by an independent CPA. And it really is management's responsibility for the preparation of your presentation of those financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then as your auditors, my team and I come in. Um, we are upstairs this year at the business office for about a week. And if you can ask Ginger, we love her all day long with requests of her team. Um, and then we are able to get all the information to audit the financial information that's presented to us. And what you're looking for from us is an opinion on those financial statements. And the district was issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get. It's a clean opinion. That means there's no material modifications that need to be made to those financial statements. So the next few pages now will kind of break you down and just go over some highlights. So we are required to show certain funds as major funds. And then you can see we have this fourth column over there called non-major funds. So um, we have two capo project funds that had a lot of activity, something that's going to set up our calculation to be pretty significant, whether that's cash to be out there because you have a lot of proceeds or it could be, oh, we actually have a lot of projects going on this year. So now we have a lot of expenditures. Um, so we do have two capo project funds that were major funds along with your general fund. So the general fund is your operating fund. You had about 24.8 million in assets. Most of that was made up of about 10 million in cash with 12 million in due from other governments. So it really is just a timing of when you receive your state aid, as well as some of the requests we have from the federal government related to your federal grants. And then we have five million, so nine million with fund balance of 15.7 million for your general fund. And the other two, the capo project fund there, the majority of those assets was all related to cash. So they have those bond proceeds that sit there until those projects come up and as the voters get approved, and then you spend those bond proceeds on those approved projects. Now the fourth column, a non-major governmental fund column, that is a combination of all your other funds. So we heard, um, you know, Ginger talk about the food service fund or your bookstore, community service. You have three debt funds. So everything else is included in that one column. And all of the detail for each of those is included in the financial statements that one of us could direct you to if you wanted to see something specific. So if we go to the next page, these are the same funds that we're talking about. But now we're looking at the revenue and expenditures related to them. So general fund, we had about 58.4 million in revenue and then expenditures about 54.8 million. So we did increase our fund balance of 3.7 million. Now the two capo projects, as you can see, we spent as we should. I know people look at this and they're like, oh my gosh, isn't that change in fund balance for your 2022 capo project funds? But remember, that's the purpose of these funds, right? You can those bond proceeds to do some expansions, do some new construction, whatever it might be with your capo projects fund. So you did spend 14.8 million. So we did reduce that fund balance in that 2022 capo project fund down to about 3.3 million. And since the weather's been pretty good, you probably spent a bit more than that from July. Even today, it's beautiful out there. So you are continuously spending down the fund balance in that capo project fund. Where it's a little bit different in your 2024 capo project fund. So those bond dollars came in, but we didn't have many expenditures or mini expenditures related to them. That's probably just some initial bond and cost that we had there. So not a lot of activity, but next year you'll see the activity happening in that capo project fund. On page five, so this is a calculation that we've been doing and charting for you for the past few years. Just going to give you a snapshot of what is your general fund fund balance as a percentage of your total expenditures for general funds. So it's a hot topic if you ever attend MSBO or any type of conferences that are put on by MDE, where they talk about what this percentage is. So you can take the total and assign issue calculation. And I did add some numbers to the side because I know when we get done, we usually come and. That's not my number, but I know what's happening. So this percentage here is the total of fund balance when we're looking at that in the calculation. Um, we do then take out some items that are assigned fund balance. So these are things you can't touch, right? So they're set aside for a specific purpose. Um, so when we do that calculation, it's a 27.6%. The calculation I think also is important is looking at what's unassigned. So that is strictly what is unassigned for your general fund at the end of the year. And when I do that calculation, it's 24.2%. Um, and MDE has, I don't know where this percentage came up, but it's been in my notes for years and I haven't heard anything different. So I keep going with it to that a comfortable range or where they would suggest if you're not planning for something big coming up in the future, so that would change the recommendation. But just as a normal year would be 15 to 20%. So you are just raised there in that range when we're looking at the unsigned at your 24.2%. On page six, we have the information for your general fund budget. And I just like to point out, we pulled out the tribal grants from this spreadsheet table that I have in here too, just so you can get better pictures. How you budget for them is a little unique and excuse some of the numbers. So I like to point out what it is without those tribal grants. So the first column is your original budget. I always say that's the best guess that you have at beginning of the fiscal year. So usually June of the prior year with what you know and as you know, in my experience, MDE changes their mind, you kind of know different things than what the state's going to give you with state aid, what that's going to come in at. So then we make adjustments and that's your final budget. So that's the best guess for where you think revenue and expenditures are going to be. Um, and then the third column is what really happens. So I always like to put the percent accurate because I think some of the fluctuations in the dollars to kind of throw us because I'm not used to dealing with a $60 million budget, you know? So some of these large variances can throw that off. So a few things I want to point out is, um, I know the board budgets to spend on grants, right? So you're trying to look out for the best interest of the students and the programs that you would have available to spend. So you do budget to spend on those grants. Um, also budget requirement at the highest level for everyone. I think it would be an administrative nightmare to try to do something else and go through and come adjust that percentage when you're making the budget. And also to be budget conservatively, right? You don't want it to come in after the audit and say, uh-oh, you tipped into fund balance quite a bit. So when you take all those things into consideration and you put the percent accurate where you're 93% accurate with your revenue and then maybe 8% accurate with the expenditures too. Now the next slide then is the tribal grants. And this one always looks bumpy to me when I'm not sure you're talking about it. But the revenue is based on current year contributions. And then the expenditures is based again on you spending every tribal grant that's available to you. So we have carryover, right? From year over year, if it's not met those certain expectations and specific requirements to be spent, then those are carried over. So then we do budget to spend all of those expenditures. And the third column is what actually happens there. So you can see the net change for the year actually was about 152,000 revenue that came in and then expenditures that went out. On the next page, we have a comparison for current year to prior year. Um, looking at your general fund. And here the change, we did have an increase in your revenue, about 9.8%. Um, or 5.2 million. The majority of that was actually related to federal revenue as the district continued to spend down remaining HESR funds. So we had those revenue reported there as well as about a 1.7 million dollar increase in your state aid this year. So you did receive some additional grants through the state aid. Now expenditures also increased earlier last year. Um, most of that was related to people services. There was about a million dollar increase on some initiatives with those HESR funds for the capturing kids' hearts. We hired a full-time nurse, I think two in-house psychologists, and also a full-time instructional coach. So all of those items were then in the current year, which increased our expenditures. The next two slides are just a different way to look at. So I always like to show a picture of where your revenue is coming in from and then next slide where the expenditures are going out. So it's a little bit easier than trying to look at a bunch of numbers on a page. Um, so when you're looking at this pie chart, you can see, you know, 59% of your general fund revenue is coming from the state with local dollars making up 24%. So local dollars include property taxes, your athletic fees and admissions as well as contributions. And then I have the same similar type of slide here with looking at the expenditures and where the funds are going to. So we have instruction is 59% and then supporting services at 36%. And they were pretty close to last year, about 3% difference between the two. And I know I get suspicious, so I looked at the another district that is similar in size. Their audit this year wasn't done yet, so I didn't have current year numbers for you. But their instruction last year was 67% and then their supporting services was 33%. So um, pretty close within a few percentage points. Again, it's really hard to compare yourself to another district because we don't know if we're really comparing apples to apples. So it depends on what they may have, you know, in instruction and what they have with supporting services. But as the overall picture and just the allocation between those two, you are pretty close to another district. When I say similar in size, I'm looking at student accounts for you. And the next couple of slides I just tossed in here to kind of look at what the bond progresses. So the top line is the revenue and this is K who did that we've been tracking. And then the blue chart that we have there are your expenditures. So you have revenue, 4.2 million for the 2020 bond. And then you spent 3.1, so you have about a million left. And again, this was as of June 30, right? You can go on by now, possibly you're close to it. So um, then the next page is your 2022 bond. So that went to, we have about 3.3 million left in that one as of June 30th to spend. And then your 2024 bond. So this just got started this year. So we just got that chart started with your revenue and then just a little bit of bond and cost for initial startup that we had on there for your 2024 bond. So my next couple of slides are just in addition to the financial statement audit. As your auditors, the standards require us to gain understanding of your internal controls. So we walk through a lot of key transaction cycles, ask for your policies and procedures, go through. Okay, you say this is definitely showing, like I want to see this, show me how this is working. You focus on your receipts, dispersment, payroll, and also how you're recording capital assets too. Um, so we are having to know if we can identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies when we're doing those procedures. And as I mentioned, this other copy is all your federal grants. So in here is the major program that we tested. So this year we only had to test one major program, HESR. Um, we covered about 47% of your total federal funds that were expended. So you had 8.6 million in federal expenditures and we tested a little over 4 million. And it's very compliance driven. So we get the compliance requirements from the federal government and then we go through and have to check and say, yes or no, there's some operating area there. So again, no findings or comments or recommendations regarding the single audit as well. So the, in this copy two is that letter I mentioned. So just a few highlights I'll point out. So you did have three significant estimates in the financial statements, one being your capital assets. So, um, you know, as you purchase a new bus or as you're building a new building, we're guessing how long you're going to use it and then we depreciate it over that estimated useful life. So standards require us just to report that that is an estimate in the financial statement as well as the significant amount of your net pension liability. And this year we had an apple of assets as to those are significant estimates as well. So there's a lot of expectations that are going into those calculations that are done by an actuary. And we get that information and report it for you within your financial statements. Um, the significant risks, what that means is, um, and I talked to a couple of you on the board as to, hey, you know, where do you feel is the most risky area of the district? So the standards require us as your auditor to also communicate to you where we spent some of our additional time and what did we do? So we spent our time looking at any areas where there's the potential for management over idling controls as well as improper revenue recognition. So June 30th is your cutoff. So we spend a lot of time looking around that date before June 30th. Right after June 30th, you can make sure things are getting reported in the proper year. Now we're two past adjustments you'll see in there. I just want to point those out quick. Um, those are related to leases and then the subscription-based information technology arrangements, which I talked about in the past three years now. Um, so nothing new, those are in there. They were insignificant to the financial statements as a whole. So we chose to pass on them and they are noted in there. But it was not anything, I just like to clarify, it was not a error and it was just an additional entry that we did not feel needed to be reported based on the guidance from the standard as well. So just some future challenges, I just want to find out, obviously student count and the unknown foundational law. As I always say, I wish I had a crystal ball and predicted the future for you all. So you know, your budgets would be on and you would know where to focus your energy and time and your expenditures, unknown funding changes. I mean, HESR has been did now, you know, I know we had the 147C money. So, you know, there's always that unknown of what are they going to do next? How do we, how do we account for it or does it go? And then sending compliance related. So it's great to have all the additional money coming to the district for great purposes, but there's a lot of red tape and hoops too. So it's a lot on the administrative staff, I know. Um, and then the pension obligation, which is 72.7 million of a liability on your district wide statement. So this is my overview. I just want to thank Ginger and her team. They had everything ready and prepared for us before we get on site and get a head start. We're 100% paperless, which I will have to zip when you all. Um, but still everything is goes through our secure portal site and it's just nice to come on site and have everything ready. Um, there's a team of four, sometimes five of us here to get through everything in those four or five days. So thank you to you and your team as well. Are there any questions that I could answer for you? Of course you do.
I agree with you. And I would have to recommend everyone to read the document with information. I'd say that in here. Yes, sir. So all of the HESR funds have to be spent by September of this current year. Do you probably be auditing the backup?
Um, probably not because it's not going to be enough to be a major program next year, I wouldn't think. I'm not, I'd have to wait to see where it may come in. Yeah, so it just depends on what, if any, you grants you might get. Um, as we have to do a calculation each year to determine if we have enough coverage of those federal expenditures.
And in your governance letter, you talked about this, about the material adjustments with police and the IT. You said it gets compared to the standard. So in the standard, it actually says the best option practice is to tag that up. Does it take those different things? You just kind of do it in a slightly different way of doing it.
Yeah, so I'll see what's going to do. Okay, so you have, you have a. Okay, so you have, you have an IT arrangement, which is a software agreement, right? So you have an agreement with the software company that you're going to use the software for three years. So for accounting purposes, every month or every quarter, whenever you get an invoice, right? You're just paying the software company, whatever. So considering your expenditure, well, a long comes GAS 887 per lease. And they, or sorry, it's the subscription basis, GAS 96. And they say, oh, wait, that's going to be a long-term agreement that now you say you're going to pay this for the next three years. So now what they want us to do, this is a new change last year. So every year, we have to evaluate any type of long-term agreements, anything longer than 12 months, to where it's a software agreement, to where the district would then basically be obligated to pay that. So we take a look at it. And in this case, it was immaterial to the district as a whole. And so materiality is huge for us. If something is immaterial, we don't need to report it, but we can't materially mistake the financial statement. So we have to evaluate those each year and in the aggregate. So maybe we pass on it this year, but let's say next year, you have a big one that's going to come in. Well, now we're going to have to book it. So every year, we have to evaluate the ones we pass on or immaterial to the financial statements.
So is that also aligned to getting more and more IT or long-term rental textbooks? Or add-on to regular textbooks? That kind of all into the same?
No, only if it's software-related. Are they hard textbooks or are they online?
Many of the textbooks are now becoming soft.
Yes, so if the agreement, there's, I don't know, five to stipulation. So it has to be longer than a year. There can't be a cancelable option on either side. So if at any point in time, you can cancel, just say, I'm done, I don't want this software anymore for this particular textbook, then we wouldn't book it either. This is basically that you have signed a contract that you're obligated to pay over more than one year.
That helps a lot. And my last question is, you said that we are up 74, 72 million dollars liability with retirement. Is there any way you can predict? I know each district is very different, but I mean, way high or way low, I mean, that sounds about right.
I wish I could do that answer. So that comes from your piece of the pie for mitcers. And they have, actuary do the calculation and an auditor audit that information. All they know is what percent that you, I don't even know who calculates the number, but 1% you have of that pie. And that is what we look at. And then it gets real more muddy when you have related to burn flows and outflows or expectation differences, experience differences. We thought the market was going to be ABC, and now it's XYZ. So now we have to take that difference, and then we amortize that too. So it's not real, I don't know how that comes up, to be honest. I can tell you what your piece was last year versus this year, about that percent.
And in general, the state determines all this information and just shares the information.
Yes, well, it's a legacy cost, right? Depends if you have a teacher here that worked for you for 10 or 15 years, and now they go to another district, you know, who has to pay for that? How they calculate that? All that stuff, they do. We audit what they provide because we're relying on them as specialists to do that. But I can tell you here, so yours was 0.2248%, which was a decrease of 0.0046%. So it did go down. And then the OPEB actually was an asset this year. So the thing with that is whenever there's, all the money is an investment. So if you have a great year in the market, it can just push that balance to rate up. You have no control over that, right? You're paying in what you're told to pay in, and you don't have any control over that. And it's the same thing for the pension side versus the OPEB side.
And that's a lot of what was having a big conversation just recently with the state. Said that there will no longer be a pool or a great increase pool, like it is now. And having access to the national.
Yes. Don't kick down my toes.
Sorry.
You're good.
I have a couple of questions. On page nine, on slide nine of the slide deck. The general fund records is what is, what causes it in your district?
3.1 million.
We're looking at the revenue, please, right?
Yes.
A lot of that would be the aggressive RSD pays us a portion of their taxes for special education programs. We call it SC6. They also pay us for the original expenditures we have for GI Tech Center. They gave them, it's a lot of money coming in from like the RSD or other institutions through RSDs.
So then my next question, what is intermediate on that same pie chart? It's the 352,000. Okay, okay. My last question.
You said, sorry, hold on, I think that might be tribal grants? Let me see if I go back to tribal. The number doesn't seem to be there today, so. Is that the same number? We found this already? Yeah, okay, yeah, that's the tribal grants.
And then my last, just the bonds, how do you have to spend the bonds? Is there a time limit? Is it always the same, sorry?
Oh, go ahead.
Typically, you're supposed to spend at least 80% of the first five years.
80%?
85%.
Yeah. And then you get a certain, you get a substantial completion. And in the past, we would commit into a bond audit, and now they switched it. And every year, what we're doing is we're pulling a sample of their expenditures for each of your bonding projects and testing that, making sure that what the overs approved to, for it to be spent on is what it's being spent on.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, in order for this to be helpful for those listening as well, on page 10, with instruction versus supporting services, could we just have a overview of what is included in both of those? Is it a ton? Sorry.
It says fun, it's, hold on. It all has to do with how the state makes us record the account structure in our books. So instruction is anything that's directly related to people instruction. Our teachers, you know, our teaching supplies, that type of stuff. Supporting services would be any of our special care programs or any aides or secretaries or principals have all of the other stuff that's meant to be correctly in the classroom for the students.
Yeah, there's a whole list on page, where you have the report on 5-1 that breaks it down. So we have basic programs, which is like elementary, middle school, high school, added needs, special education. And then supporting services, I mean, it's people transportation, athletic activities, you know, central offices and offices. All of those can come in there. There is the detail line by line on 5-1.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just go on that page. So technical outline, am I right in interpreting this as like buses and buildings and equipment? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yep, anything that you are going to purchase that is not considered a repair and maintenance, so something that's going to last you more than a year. And then we usually will get that, and they're typically things that then get added to your capital asset schedule. You're welcome.
I was nervous in asking one question that should sort of, thank you.
No problem.
And thank you to Ginger for this one.
I'll say this, thank you so much. I know this is a huge one to be making every year, so thanks, Ginger. Thank you, Jamie. You mentioned it makes sense.
Oh, good.
I do that every year.
Good, there you go.
Thank you, Jamie. I'll move into Ginger's audit presentation.
Yes, I'd like to take the same information and put it in a little bit different format for you. So just trying to keep that here till. But I also like to thank Jamie for being there. I was amazing to work with. They don't follow that so well. We know we're doing their job, tracking you, that we're doing our job, so. We appreciate the relationship, and yeah, I appreciate them. I appreciate everyone in my office that helps them, that's like through this whole processing, the whole district. You see, you know, we do have more budget than national standards. And it's really, I say this every year, but I'm going to, the whole district being their part to be conservative. And, you know, we've been behind the net on dollars for it, so we have something to be careful of. Mine will be very quick, but I just like to try to break it down a little bit, in a format that you're used to. Looking at the fund balance, general fund with tribal grants did increase this year 3.7 million dollars. 3.9 of that, which sounds weird, is a long one, because we dig into that fund balance for tribal projects. We should be able to come up to spend those. And then just breaking down what that fund balance is. There's $285,000 in inventory. This is a small amount of gloves that we carry every year, that we maybe scratch. They're latex, and we can't use them in a lot of places in our district. But we try to use them now, as much as we can. And then we're in a unique situation, maybe, because we have the GI Tech program here, and they're building a house. So in the last two years, they have put money into buying the supplies and building the house. And I sold the house, so we take those expenditures and put it into our fund balance and pull it into the year that they sell the house. And then we'll put them back on our books, so we'll have the revenue for selling the house of these expenditures for building the house in this year. So we have each other. There's a small amount of creeping icons. Usually, there's conferences that a lot of our staff like to attend in July. I always encourage them to book prior to the end of the festival. So here's, prepaid, so then it can be booked in the actual year that the conference is in. The tribal grants, the 1.5 million dollars, that's the balance that we have on our post right now that can be spent. It's like you made a budget situation, Jamie talked about. We budgeted that full amount on our post in case they did spend all in one year. So that's why I don't want to always, it's a little. The building and the permit expenditures really is where it comes in to prove how great each individual permit is in building, district building is on, not simply the number of people. So they, they have a set budget hanging on. Buildings have fixed up, so you can count dollar amounts, different things like that. But almost half a million dollars went on spend this year, and might have gone back to the general fund. So that's huge for me. When I say, like, everybody's doing their part, that's where you can see everybody's doing their part, not just to spend money, to spend money. The subsequent years expenditures, that's how much of work proved in due to spend into fund balance for the 24, 25 fiscal year. And then all the rest is the unassigned, so that's how that fund balance is broken out. I kind of like to then pull out the tribal grants and look at the usable fund balance. So we look at the building and the permit expenditures, the subsequent years expenditures, and the unassigned. They'll draw up the statistics. The inventories are being spent, the UKs are being spent, we took out the tribal grants. So it's all like usable percentages, the fund balance, and I look at that as a percentage of fund balance, and that puts it at 25.5%. So I know Jamie looked at it in a few different ways. This is one, another good idea is a lot of times to look at fund balance, but we're seeing right dimension for 25%. And then we look at budgets in actual, I didn't break it down, I'm looking at just revenues and just expenditures. I looked at it overall, if you look at just six, four, and six, five of the audits. Overall, we were over budgeted by 2.9 million dollars. And again, it's easy, but I'll go back to the whole district. It's just, that's the, all of our budget to 100%, which is a great thing to do. With that variance, we have some 61.5 expenditure budget, that's a 95.3% accuracy in our budget. And then I just kind of broke down what that 2.9 million dollars was. The building and permit expenditures is a little bit different. I think 4.5 million dollars is 90% later, but. Salaries and benefits on the budget, like Jamie mentioned, we do budget the highest amount of retirement for every individual. So that gets a little bit into the budget if somebody selects a lower range. We did have some extra salary budgets in there, and I think a lot of it, some of it was for our transportation. I have to pad their salary every year because they can pick up extra field trips or athletic runs and things like that. We didn't spend as much as that, so we did have to still charge us this last year. So their salary was over budgeted a little bit. Some of that is in tribal grants, so we didn't spend over gold keys, different things like that. Some behavior interventions, interventions, like, we moved into Esser, so it's just over budgeted. And the last, the next slide, the general fund expenditure moved into Esser. We were realizing at the end of the year, we still had a lot of money to spend in Esser by September 30th. So we were able to move a lot of the expenses for the Way Oasis program and the software that we use in that program into the Esser grant at the end of the fiscal year. So that was our budget in general, but we took that one in this year. So that, that's not the last budget in general that was spent. The carrier were allowed, so the board has improved PSC curriculum testing and the maintenance budgets. All, they don't spend 100% of the budget, they need to carry that amount forward into next year to spend that. And then a whole bunch of slants and rest of the 61 million dollar budget that, on utilities, we were, our fuel costs were lower than budgeted. Printing, we have a little bit extra CDA, just a whole bunch of different things. So now this is the 352,000. I know I went really quick, I didn't have the answer.
I just have a question, I don't know who's best to ask. But can you probably understand a little more of the tribal grants? Like, when we receive those, are they for specific grants? And then is there carryover because maybe, you know, they have to check all the boxes for that? And maybe someone didn't get the great news, speak into that a little more, so I can see it.
There's, there's a lot of different scenarios. So they could ask for a little bit more than necessary for the grant, just in case something comes up. You know, so we could have a few extra thousand dollars off a grant that we had a lot of. Or, especially in the most recent years, we have all these Messer funds, we can pay for things. So we're spending those because they have a timeline on them, as opposed to the tribal grants. Maybe somebody who broke the grant moved down, it takes, you know, administration a little bit to figure out who the person is and how to spend that down if you broke the grant. But we're really striving to spend those down, but we're also trying to keep the integrity of what the original grant. But I think a lot is having, saving better grant dollars that we can use on these ones instead. And kind of save these, maybe it was coming here when all our Essers gone, meaning we didn't utilize this one.
I also just, just to get that, Katie, I think that many of our staff members write tribal grants. And the idea that the grant would be spent over a period of multiple years. So maybe they implemented the grant that they haven't completed every cycle, that, you know, whether it's a field trip or classroom supplement. Like, for example, I've received multiple grants for our boiler cap that's meant to feed the dogs for many years. So I'd chip away at that grant, but I won't spend it all because they need food all the time.
And then assuming that those traditionally tribal grants are well-reared of that, like that we might use this first, you know, we might use our Esser funds or that kind of thing, but it will, that is the.
Yeah, the tribe actually just implemented a process this last year where every grant writer completes a form that indicates how much of the grant they use, what their plans are, if they were able to use it, if not, what, so it's kind of closing that reporting loop. And as a grant writer, you will continue to submit that form every grant cycle until your grant is spent 100%. So we're keeping them in the loop. And I think Ginger and her office has a really nice job of making sure that we're also maintaining the original intent of the grant. As we do have staff members that change, now someone might say, well, this is great, if we do this instead. And the answer is no, we have to stick with that original intent. So we're always doing that, exchange of information so that they know where we are.
Thank you so much. Thank you for asking that question, Katie. That was a question I had to open.
Does anyone else have questions for Jamie or for Ginger? I just want to thank you both for all your work on this, because I know it's a lot, and we definitely appreciate it. All right, move on to the next item on our report this evening. We are going to learn about a new field trip from office and high schools. I'll introduce Jenner Willer, and I think Jenner's got some students with him as well. To talk a little bit about an exciting field trip. So just to remind everybody, the board typically approves field trips that are out of state and or overnight. And then also, we'd like to hear about field trips that are new. And fortunately for these guys, this field trip hits all three of those categories. So thank you for being here this evening. So thank you for being here this evening.
Yeah, some familiar faces, some not new ones. Oh yeah, some not new ones. My name is Jenner Willard. I'm actually a science student at the high school. And then starting this year, I'm the advisor for our chief science officer program that we are working with through CMU here as well. And so that partnership through CMU is through the Center for Excellence in Student Education. And so the dates are going to be very quick, so I am really sorry. But between CSL, CMU and us, trying to get all the information and things collected to be able to present to the C U was a very fast turnaround, and so I am really sorry. So the dates for this trip are next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And so it's actually going to be in Chicago. Those dates also line up with CSL International Conference as well. And so some of our students are going to be able to take part into the CMU CSL kind of side of looking into different STEM careers. We're going to the field in CM, we're going to have behind the scenes, we're going to the Shettuck area, things like that. And some of our students as well are actually going to have the opportunity to attend the CSL International Conference and kind of line up with our trip as well. So some of our students such as Ikula and Mamai, we'll introduce themselves again when they get away talking after I do, are actually attending the CSL International Conference. So I'm sure that they're very excited for that. I'm really excited as a first year teacher, as somebody new, I actually was behind the scenes for CSL when I was a CMU student. So I worked with our person at our point of contact there and so like a lot of behind the scenes stuff. And so this is actually been a trip in the making for like the last like two or three years at this point, trying to make this happen. And with it being Chicago and being so close, we are very excited that CMU is actually going to be paying for everything. The only things that our students will have to worry about is any souvenirs that they feel are of interest to them. They are getting bussed there. I will be there along with, I asked another teacher, firm wide departments that come as well. Somebody sort of Shmansky will be there as well with us. And so both her and I are also getting paid to go there along with our students because I just want to make sure that they have support, have the people they need there. And of course, it's a really big deal, right? They're 14, 15, 16, 17 year olds, probably most of them don't have jobs. And so trying to make sure that everyone is able and willing to be able to go is just a really big thing. And so we're very appreciative for CMU to be able to pay for all of this for us. And so if Mamai, Ikula kind of want to talk about something, they might be excited about the trip or their involvement in our program or whether it's to, I just would like.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. My name is Mamai Eskeiza, I'm a senior at Mount Pleasant High School. And in addition to being a student, I am an NHS workup coordinator and proud to be a chief science officer. I think this is our third year having Chief Science Officer program in the NHS. It's been a little bit challenging to get that going in the school. Our first member, in with Deborah Oseri, she started this. And at that point in time, there was only one member of the Chief Science Officer program. But we're really glad that now we have 12 people being able to expand the situation. Some of our initiators have been making STEM kicks for the library. We have bake sales, had football games during the end of the year, we had one homecoming game to increase revenue. I get stuff for our initiators and projects that we develop here because Chief Science Officers is about action plans, doing stuff with community to make a difference, get its own first STEM at the scene. And we're having one this week at the, the. The conference that we're going to is the 2024 SLA Cup International Chief Science Officer Conference. SLA Cup stands for students learning because of the doctors. And here we're hoping to learn how to make our Chief Science Officer program here more engaging, get more involved in the involvement. Some of the things that we, I'm actually a panelist with their events there. And I'm obviously moderating something with other Chief Science Officers internationally. So we talked about participation, talked about what we've done in our schools, talked about some of the STEM kits that they got at the library. And we're just trying to let people know that we're here, represent Mount Pleasant High School, and talk about something we hope to, to, in the, for students to examine and voice.
Hi, my name is Rob Nizza. And while, while she said that the CSL program in Mount Pleasant High School did start so big in Renaissance, where I came from before I came to high school, we had actually a lot of members. So Lucy Sue, who comes to the high school, you know, we're going to do it, this is my third year being a CSL. And I've never actually happened to go to an international conference. I've only been like, the people who like see what's going on there with another lot of passion, they hit it. And I think it would be very cool for that to go. When I get to go? Because I get to learn my presentation skills since we get to have an elevator pitch and learn the action plans. So I'd say like my action plan was like CSL bake sales, we're like saying, we should, we should do this because it helps like we talked to so many people during the bake sale who didn't know it is a, we got money. So just spreading awareness and getting ready to be able to, like some of the action plans we're about to do. And I also think it's a very broad experience because I still don't exactly know who I am in the group or what I'm referring to. So I'm getting to meet all these new people who obviously know what they want to do in the future. I can, that I'm just in a career focus with me. And we'll also can get funding from this conference as well and people's funds in the future for bigger cases when we're happy. And that's something else that we're doing is that we get to have a course, like learning about a different skill set that we get to talk about and talk about how to change this process and.
Any questions, Laura?
I don't have a question, I just want to say I'll be inclined to approve this if you all want us to come back and tell us what you did at this conference.
I'm very excited. I personally have never like spent three days in Chicago. And so like I've never been to the Alusia, never heard of it, so like me as my 22 year old self, I'm so excited.
It warmed my heart to hear that you talked about this. And so thank you to the STEM Center for sending you there and for that collaboration you have been. I hope you have a ton of fun. And yeah, it was just fantastic to see your excitement about it.
So when you're working with this evening, you do have the field trip paperwork that Mr. Willard submitted. So under new business, we'll ask the board to approve the field trip and then you will. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And the next item on my report is another special about what we have coming up. So I'll introduce to Mr. Luke Apple, Jamie, he's here to talk to us about the Mount Pleasant High School Veterans Day Assembly.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Luke Apple, Jr., the senior's retired, so he's, some will probably join us, new grad maybe. But anyway, very excited about the Veterans, Veterans Day Assembly this year. Did, where are you, okay, you have it. So if you guys want to take a look at your PowerPoint that I shared through the Google slides there, you can see that before I get into the assembly itself, we are doing a run for veterans. You see on the screen there, it's this Saturday, October 26th at 10:00 a.m. right here at the football stadium. And we're inviting, of course, our Mount Pleasant Public School students, staff, and of course, community members as well. And if you guys want to come on, walk, whatever, we'll have donors, we'll have games, we'll have music and maybe even some dancing. So it's a good way to raise awareness and some money for the Disabled American Veterans Association. So that's where Monday's meeting years work. So that's this Saturday. And National Honor Society, they are helping on the event. Mrs. Kelly Beckett, she's not here tonight, but she's been definitely a ball of energy in helping lead this effort as well. We have 93 students in that National Honor Society, so she's had a great job of growing it and giving those kids responsibilities like this. The, the run is free, the whole event's free. Well, like I said, if able to just give a donation to the Disabled Americans Veterans Association. So that's the first thing. The second thing, the second thing I'm definitely inviting you guys for, inviting you to, and try to get you guys some, you know, front row seats for, is the Veterans Day Assembly, which is November 6th at supposed to be 1:50 p.m. November, or Veterans Day is traditionally always November 11th. But there's definitely a reason why we're having November 6th, the day after the election. Definitely they don't want to have it after the election, but like I said, there's a big reason why it's after the election. But it's going to be right here in our gymnasium, right here at Mount Pleasant High School. And we're inviting, of course, like I said, you guys, the whole board here. And not just students and staff members, but the entire community of Mount Pleasant. We got a big gym, so let's, let's try to fill it. But the, if you go to the next slide there, yep. At the assembly, of course, we'll have our veterans, we'll have honor guard in the colors. We'll have men, well, the ceremonial kill the action POW MIA ceremony. And then we'll have students, student speakers, teacher speakers. I know Mamai who just speak up here, she spoke at it last year. I think she's in a sin for us, right Mamai? That's a joke. No, she's, but she helped out a big time last year. She's definitely, you know, helped out in a lot of ways in our school here. But we'll have our music with our band and our choir. And then we're going to have a bagpiper. So I'm super excited about having this bagpiper. You can see he actually went to school here, graduated 2015, I don't know his name, but he's a really good bagpiper. So I think that's just going to really add to the grand juror of the assembly. And then, of course, our veteran speaker, if you go to the next slide. This is the big reason why we're having the assembly November 6th. It's the only day that works for our veteran speaker. His name is Jim McLuhan, you can see he's James McLuhan, but he goes by Jim. He's Michigan's only living Medal of Honor recipient. There's only 60 current living Medal of Honor recipients in the entire country. He's one of them. Like I said, he's the only one in Michigan that's still alive. And he served in, during the Vietnam War and he has quite the heroic story. If you've ever seen Forrest Gump, he's like pretty much the living Forrest Gump soldier that is, is real. He saved a lifetime's lives while in Vietnam. And he has two Purple Hearts as well, so he was hit by enemy fire a few times. He's going to speak in, that's correct, he's going to sing at the assembly too. He's not only a, you know, a military hero, he's also an Athletic Hall of Fame, but he's also a talented singer. He does like Broadway theater type of singing, so definitely excited for that. And he was Medal the Medal of Honor back in 2017. So that's definitely the big thing. The thing that we're super excited to have is, is this Medal of Honor. So I, I remember Medal of Honors, I'm super pumped up for that. And definitely trying to get the students to understand the, the magnitude of it and how rare an opportunity is to just shake the hand of a Medal of Honor recipient. Something new we're adding to our assembly is the lunch before the assembly. Herbs and Spices, our school restaurant, they graciously agreed to help out with this lunch. And we're going to have that at 12:15 or 1:15 the same day as the assembly. And Mr. McLuhan, the Medal of Honor, he plans to attend and speak to the veterans and meet them. And that's a cool thing about him, he's really down to earth and he, he just likes to, of course, meet the local veterans, of course, our students and teachers. He's a busy guy though, being the only one from Michigan. I think that later that day, he's going to fly out to New York City and go to like a Medal of Honor convention. Pretty big deal for him, so we're definitely happy to have him this year. And I think, yeah, that's the last slide. Do you guys have any questions or concerns or comments? So the public is invited. Yes, problems here on process or version they go? Yeah, yeah, but that's actually the slide that skipped over. On the one slide, I forgot what it was on. You know, it's, yeah, right there. So the RSVP, it's a Google form and it has all the instructions on it. And it has like a category for veterans and then community members as well. And it's just, of course, when the community members want to get, they check into the main office. To have them go through the front doors? Yep, get the front doors in. Anything else?
You probably weren't planning this, because some of you are really excited.
Yeah, it's been a long process that, starting December when I got a hold of Jim. Super pumped up for it and like I said, you're all invited and I'll make sure you guys, you know, some nice seats up front there. The veterans have the best, but you guys, we'll make sure you have the right seat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on my report is an update from the Sex Ed Advisory Board. I'm going to turn it over to you to keep the conversation.
So this information was presented at the last board meeting, so this is kind of, so they had actually proposed several modifications to the bylaws. This is what this will be right here in the garden. So they had recommended on our requesting that we do modify the bylaws to increase the maximum number of board members to 13. And the breakdown recently there is actually in the document itself. Second one was the modification in the length of term of some of the members. So there's just kind of this transitional issue with members and getting the new board, the new bylaws running. And so they have recommended and applied festival proof modification on this grandfathering idea. I think the board members who've been there, stayed there, probably go through this transition of to the new bylaws. So those are really the two big things that they asked. There was a Sex Ed Advisory Board meeting last week. They wanted me to bring this board to everybody and ask, so they can knock it down and kind of keep moving in their processes. So again, there are those two modifications that they're asking and justification. The whole Sex Ed Advisory Board is recommending, one is increasing the 11 to 13. And the other is this grandfathering structure to help sort of transition from former board members to this new bylaws. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand. The idea is that the increase in numbers would allow for another student representative? And that is, that position is earmarked for students?
I don't know if it's earmarked per se. It's the idea of what the bylaws originally was to have up to two students. Apparently was in the language that they were using. So this is to be more for, to help with keeping things odd instead of even, as in total conflict.
I guess the reason I ask is because I'm looking at the letter that's in our report packet right now. And it says on Monday, September 9th, you voted to request this motion for amendment. Reasons we discussed to request this amendment includes currently there are 11 additional members who must be represented voting member. Our group would like to have the ability next school year to include others to be representative.
So part of the issue is, is 11 currently, one student makes it 12.
Yep.
Which is also not the best structure. And then the other would be that they seem to be interested in having two students having a voice on.
We've already, no, already have up to two students.
I remember writing a conversation last meeting, there was also a concern that a lot of folks have a term that expires in 2026 and that we give them an additional number with a different term limit. That was, I think that was the three arguments that were brought forward. Student adding 12 at a time and very expanded range. And so I don't think it ties the Sex Ed Advisory Board to add a student, but that was one of the options. I don't think it's, I understand you guys don't earmark.
We have, so one, the first word we're talking about, increasing the number is Article D. Number of the members in the leadership, which is section, section one. And the other part is Article D, which is that. Article G, section three of the grandfathering, so that. Says that they didn't ask the board, whatever percentage of the 90th being felt that they had the most of the school staff. And it's currently on the board, a previous intended being on the board for two years when the grandfathered in, since they were on the board. Stand the exception, two staff members, president is being, and then the rest of the letter is updated that was given. So they, what they're looking for is us modify section, Article D, section one to 13. You're correct here, it does say that 13 would be two students instead of one student. And then to modify Article G, section three, so the length of term of public, public schools. So the length of term of public, public school staff is one a year. So they, and they, they would be appointed for additional term as further outlined in the rest of the board.
Jessica, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
And there will be a third component, which I add on the agenda, which is the appointment of the student that's not to be applied process. And would like to be appointed. Recommendation from the Sex and Advisory Board is to appoint that student to that seat. We're down by one seat.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about this Sex and Advisory Board, please?
And I think the overall idea is to have this initiated later in the year as in like next year. Adding the extra student, because we've already got through the process of the application.
So we'll revisit this topic again under the business this evening. Next, we will move into a second reading of our policy review. And I apologize for sending out some information a little bit late. I was trying to organize and understand all of the policy information that we have. And so this is where I ended up. So we cannot let this and we can choose to do something different and that's fine, but this is my recommendation. So as you see on the agenda this evening, we have three different rulings of policies. My suggestion is that we have tonight act as the second reading of those rulings of policies. And I can go through those in just a minute. Those are policies that we have reviewed the last two board meetings. And from my notes, I believe that we do not have any changes that we would like to make on these policies. The recommended, recommended changes on these policies have come to us from TRU. So we do have to approve them because they are different than what we currently have. And I can go through a correction now and then talk about anything else you need to. Item four on the agenda, there are a few policies that need to be removed. If you recall back in January, we approved a handful of policies. And we approved them as a policy number with the letter R next to them. And that was because we knew that changes to state law are going into effect after July 1st. So essentially items four and five, under my report, and then you'll see it again repeated under new business, are to remove those initial policies. And then take the new policies that we approved in January and remove the R from them. So it looks a little bit awkward and redundant on the agenda. For example, I'm asking to remove policy forty-four oh two. And then the next goal we would ask would be to remove the R in policy forty-four oh two R. But it's essential so that way we're compliant with the U.S. law that went into effect July 1st. And then we just have one forty-four oh two policy. The only exception to that is policy forty-two oh nine. And we can talk about that now or we can go through. That is the policy that is the prohibition for staff to discuss abortion with students. That was a state law that is no longer a state law. That policy is now an optional policy. And so based on previous conversations with the board, it's my understanding we would like to delete that policy. So that's why I put that under the recommendation as a policy to the board. So that is in general what I'm sort of proposing for this evening. Does anybody have any questions about that? Because I know a lot. I shared that I've seen policies in my seat right now, so.
Whenever it fits best, I'd like to talk about it for each of them.
Okay.
So whenever that makes the most sense, we'll.
Should I go through the policies just kind of as a bulk? And then when we get to that one, we can pause and talk about them?
Good.
Makes sense to everyone? Okay.
Can I have that table?
Okay, yep. And then as always, if they have questions, we'll just stop. So, excuse me. Okay, so we'll start with the two thousand series. So our first policy is policy twenty-three oh three, looking at Florida court of ethics. And there they made changes in item B one. We're looking at public stature of board members. The next change, our next policy is policy twenty-four oh one, board member elections.
Can I have that last one second?
Yeah.
In this policy, first one we are talking about here, you have to make a choice between two options, right? Twenty. Twenty-three oh three, yeah. A, one, B, right.
So that's gonna be a hook of a problem where with the policies, because you all requested to see the red lines. So we actually have already made that decision in, in A, B. And I can tell you what the decision is. So where it says, if the suspected alleged violation is disputed, the board may initiate an investigation by an affirmative vote of the majority of the members elected when appointed to, or appointed to it serving on the board. So we opted for the board being able to initiate that as opposed to the board president. That is what currently is in our house.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
What about these seven at the end, is that the same theme we already picked?
Yep, so for all of these, we have already picked.
We find this one. What we picked.
I mean, in the past, so initially this was in line with the law.
Right.
So we did, it wasn't optional. I think it is only.
Right, it is optional.
And we're, I think, probably gonna have to come back to this after we talk about this.
Forty-two oh nine.
So let's make a note.
We'll be discussed at that point in case on our decision. Forty-two oh nine.
We visit these seven.
Policy twenty-four oh one, board member elections. There's just slight changes that at least board member, one board member office must be on the ballot for his regular election of history.
Jessica, the changes we put in our policy review table, are those all new?
The ones that are on the far right side are new. The only thing I found here was a typo. At least one board office must be on the ballot, let it be officer. And apologies if these are my requests or questions ever done.
Oh, you're fine.
Some of it is, you know, keeping track is.
So for an editorial change, again, we can probably still approve the policy and then make the change as we finalize the documents. Policy twenty-four oh five, board officers. So under the first paragraph there, we have, we have selected that first option that board officers must be board members. The change is under D two, where they separated out D two and D three. So differentiating the president and secretary and then the treasurer, making those separate offices.
And that, we find without table or number two.
Moving on, policy twenty-five oh one. This is a new policy to us where we have not reviewed that previously. Under number five, we're looking at the emergency meetings of the board. And that we may, may hold an emergency meeting in the event of certain events. May elect to change immediately because of.
There was no comments on this one, either that's it or.
Now, a question was for four oh five. So very beginning, the treasurer has to be under the board.
That is correct.
So then on down, D three, the bottom has to be treasurer becomes vacant, board elects a board member for the vacancy. Isn't that where?
So the policy reads, if the office of treasurer becomes vacant, the board must promptly elect a board member to fill that vacancy. A person elected or appointed to the vacant board office will serve in that office for the balance of that office's term.
I didn't see if there was option one or two, sorry.
No, that's okay. So if the, if the, this section of the policy is highlighted in blue, that is a section where you have options. That's what we highlight means on the, the strike through. So again, some of these, because we've already chosen the option. What I have on the paper is slightly different. But that would be, yes, so the non-member piece has already been removed. So we're good with twenty-five oh one?
Hold on.
Yes.
Yeah. And then twenty-five oh four?
That's also you, I'm finding those.
And that's public participation in board meeting. And the only change to this is on V one. Prior to this, it said his or her, and they changed it to their. In V two, the highlighted blue means that we have an option to put a number in for the number of women. And you know, our standard practice is that we look at public comment. Any questions about that, boss?
Hold on, my computer wasn't having a full second.
I think it can hold comments from you, Katie, but I think we've already addressed it. It was just a question.
It was a question that.
Change to the policy. Should we? Okay. And I know in the back again, I had some issues getting everything exact that I wanted to. So we will skip, I know you're having the policy thirty-one oh two, but that is a policy where we need to make edits. So I'm not, I'm not proposing that we act on that policy this evening.
Monma, since you kept all the ones that we had to.
Correct, correct. I, I, I'm sorry, I was looking for that. So after our first reading of the policies, I went back through the policies and anything that we have edits for, I set those aside because we need additional work on those. My goal is to try to shorten the list of policies that we still need to review. That's really what I'm trying to help myself get together, the chaos of this. So, right, so that was just in there because it was too, too exciting to happen. And we're good, we'll move on to the three thousands. So policy thirty-one oh four, school cameras and monitoring. And remember, this is a section where we go into several policies. Where the change is that previously the policy said parent slash guardian. TRU defined parent as anyone, parent or guardian that were involved with a student and they're using the capitalized P. So there's several policies of them, it's just the editorial change in thirty-four oh one.
Thank you for clarifying that, if perhaps for a second.
Yeah, that's okay.
Jessica, is there any questions still at home? We asked, do we want to add events that might not fall into the category of sporting events or performance?
I, no.
Yeah. Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Next is thirty-one oh five, visitors and volunteers. Again, that is the same editorial changes we can see there where they're changing the parent slash guardian to the capitalized parent. Policy thirty-one oh six, booster clubs, PTOs and other support groups. Again, that's the same editorial change. Under V one, you can see that, see, adding the language that an internal support group is a group of individuals that supports the district's programs and activities.
I'm, yes, we are.
Thirty-one oh seven, use of detection dogs. And again, that's just the same editorial change with the parent slash guardian.
We do not want.
Policy thirty-one oh eight. The change comes in item F, where they're clarifying who the animal needs to be under control of a handler at all times. So there's a little bit of change in language there. And then under G, it's again the parent or guardian switch.
There is no comments on this one.
Policy thirty-one eighteen, looks kind of crazy because of all the red. But if you remember back in August, we approved policies thirty-one fifteen and thirty-one fifteen A through G, which is all of our Title IX policies. So much of the former thirty-one eighteen addressed Title IX sexual harassment. This new policy is really only just that first paragraph that's underlined. And it's basically not discrimination common in contracts with the district. So it's related to Title IX, but it is different than, so this, this policy, there are several pages of stricken language. And that's because all of that language has already been waterproof in policy thirty-one fifteen. Are there questions about thirty-one eighteen? Nope. It just looks kind of scary. The next policy is thirty-one nineteen. Thirty-one nineteen is looking at experimental pilot programs. This was an optional program. We did opt to select this policy back when we originally chose it. And the only change is in the legal citation at the very end.
That one's good too.
Next, policy thirty-two oh seven, school activity spots. And again, that is just an update to the legal authority for this policy at the very end.
That we did in this year.
Policy thirty-three oh one is purchasing and procurement. And the often change in this policy is in letter A, which refers back to policy twenty-two oh two subsection C. You know, one of the things that we discussed throughout this process is that we want to make sure that our policies are consistent with one another. And this is an example of TRU making sure that our policies are plausible for this. Next is policy thirty-three oh three, gifts and donations. And again, that's just that first paragraph, changing the parent slash guardian to the capitalized parent.
That one's good too.
Policy thirty-three oh six, construction bidding. Looking at V five, that's an additional statement regarding federal or state prevailing wage requirements. One thing to know is that the current way that prevailing wage requirements do not apply to our district because our board will have to receive non-qualified bonds because of our outstanding.
This one, I said somewhere to N D E was referenced without spelling out the initials, but I can't find it.
Okay, well, it's in A one.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if it's, if you want to move it through, I don't know if we need.
I think that's, yeah, an editorial cover that we can make without getting any sort of, the work you're comfortable with. And that knowing that when Javon and I finalize these, we'll spell it out in the air.
Absolutely.
Policy thirty-three oh seven, construction administration. Under A three, there's optional language there. Before building a new building, and we opted to not include that language. And so you'll see that on, well, on the policy, it just will say I D three reserve, which means that there's no. Under D one and two, that section is added, and again, that refers back to prevailing wage requirements.
There's no questions on this one.
Thirty-four oh two, drilled claims and reports. Under this sort of restructuring of this policy, under V, they've added information regarding the cardiac emergency response plan. And then under C, the drinking water management plan. We're really fortunate, thanks to deputy police hard work last year, we're all set with our cardiac, cardiac emergency response plan. And thanks to Joshua, who's good worker, we're in very good shape with our drinking water management plan as well. Also, in the last paragraph, there's another change of the parents, parent slash guardian to just.
So no new questions or suggested changes?
Under policy forty-three oh thirty, four oh three, sorry, reporting accidents is just a change of the parent slash guardian.
That one's good too.
Thirty-four oh six, integrated pest management, again, just changing the parent slash guardian piece. Under thirty-four oh eight, firearms and weapons. Under A, you'll see that that's optional language, that we did not take the references to the antique firearm. Under 5, we did take the actual language there that further clarifies what could be considered a weapon. And then under B, permitted use, this is where the change has come in that policy where they're clarifying what is a peace officer as defined by law, and they have a legal citation there. And then again, there's changes to the parent slash guardian. On the back page or the next page, under 3, all of those areas highlighted in blue are exceptions to the policy. And we opted to not take any of those exceptions. That's what's already approved in our policy.
Can you say that again? We opted to keep those out?
They are out, they are out. So those areas highlighted in blue on the back of that policy are exceptions to the restriction, and we opted to have no exceptions.
Is that something we as a board decided?
We did that, started board approved, that was, that was what was decided back when we initially transitioned to these policies. Katie, you can always.
I just don't remember seeing these options, so I was just.
So if you remember when we initially went through the policies, some of the work was done administratively. So Ginger and I worked with our technology for American Services officers, our building principals, to make sure that our policies were compliant with law and most closely aligned with our practices. So if those options weren't in the policies that you saw, we certainly could have decided to keep on it.
I think that was just the difference.
Yeah. So policy 3410, that first section there indicates that this policy is optional. And if you remember, we did not initially elect to adopt this policy. And then after guidance from Debbie, then we did decide that we would adopt this policy. So the blue part will be deleted on our policy. And the only change is the parent slash guardian piece under V2.
Question on you. Yep, we did that.
Okay, that's the 3000s.
Any questions about those?
Efa. Okay. So next we go into the 4000 series. And these are the policies that we just reviewed at our last board meeting. And so again, what I did is I took the whole group that we reviewed. I pulled out any policy that we believe that there were changes or things that we wanted to discuss further. And so hopefully, these policies should be ones that we already approved that we didn't have to. But of course, we can talk about any changes that any time is open. So starting with policy 4101, non-discrimination. This policy was changed to include the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. And so you can see where there's some sections of the policy that are struck. And then towards the bottom of the second page, that's where they add information regarding FMA. And then regarding the pregnant, sorry, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. Under V, there are recording requirements that it references the employment compliance officer as identified in policy 3115B. And that is our assistant superintendent. That was an earlier policy that we approved with our other Title IX policies back in August.
There's no new questions, let me know the questions that are there, we're answering the rest.
Policy 4102 is anti-harassment. This policy, you can see where language has been added in the introductory policy statement. And then there's quite a bit of the policy that is stricken, again, because those issues are addressed in our new policies in the 3115 series. There is additional information regarding unlawful retaliation. And then there's a reference towards the very end of the policy regarding Afghanistan compliance officer in policy 3115. Policy 4104, employment complaint procedures for allegations implicating civil rights. So again, this is adjusting those policies to be compliant with the new pieces of state law.
Sorry, Jennifer, that was, the one we adjusted was 4102. We did have on the original, we wanted, that was one we wanted to add a heading paragraph of the meeting. So that might be one that we would have said. But I don't know, so that's what we had said originally. It looks like it was already sent to Trune and someone got already done. So the pages be that those changes are not on yours. Does that make sense?
Did, I guess I don't have an introductory here, did someone write an introductory?
Yeah, we had a couple sentences. Something suggested NTPS committed to providing all personnel with state and support programs with a working environment which all members of the school community are treated with respect. And then these on the table indicate that we sent that to Trune, but that never happened.
So then is that the same for policy 4104?
No.
No, okay.
Just had it at the beginning of that whole section.
Of the whole section of 4102?
Yeah, we didn't have anything on 4101, so yeah, we'll just put it for you. 4101.
I think we wanted something similar, and we're not very that in 4105. Workplace accommodations for employees that have disabilities.
So 4104, are there questions about 4104?
No.
So then 4105, this is disability workers' accommodations for employees and applicants. And this, the change in this policy is a reference to the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. And you're saying we want a paragraph on this one?
Yeah, we said the same thing, that we sent those to Trune already. All right, I guess that's why it's on the table. It might be what they answered with at the time.
Okay, policy 4105 is a new policy, and again, that is the pregnancy and workplace accommodations for employees and applicants. It's a whole new policy.
There's no comments or questions here.
Policy 4105B, it's religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants.
Same, there's no comments.
And then the next policy is policy 4106, that's Family Medical Leave Act. And then changes in that policy, again, there are several places throughout the policy where they changed the parent slash guardian to just parent. Under 3A, there's optional language that's added that gives the superintendent flexibility where it says the superintendent or designated may be able to improve an intermittent review schedule for leave and retraining. So that gives flexibility so that it could be the superintendent or the designated. Otherwise, the rest of the policy remains as it is currently, which is compliant with the federal law regarding.
We're good.
So what was that we made?
I didn't see any suggested changes, so we're good.
Oh, have we decided there whether or not we're adding the optional language?
We did it, I don't think I know what the choice was.
Jennifer's part of that way. 3A.
3A, right, that's the change to the policy. My recommendation would be to add that language. 4107, military leave. That is the spot where they added space force into the policy of those individuals that are eligible for military.
There's no comments here either.
Under 4202, that's the Children Protective Services policy. And that, for this revision, it adds adult protective services. So there's several spots where they've added APS into the policy. And then under section A1, the third paragraph down, that paragraph is meant to further define adult protective services in this school employee's obligation to report they have cause to believe that a vulnerable adult was subjected to abuse in the last.
There's no comments or questions?
Under 4204. Sorry. 4204, confidential student information. There's just two spots where you can see there in red where they've changed the parent slash guardian to parent.
Yep, there's no comments or questions.
Under 4206, employee contracts. The section that was added there is under 14 regarding an appeal process concerning the evaluation and reading under employment contract. So the new state law requires that we have an appeal process.
No comments on this one.
Under 4207, third party contracting, there's just a change in the second sentence. Before it said unless expressly prohibited by a collective bargaining agreement, and they changed it to unless prohibited because of a collective bargaining agreement. A little bit of change in legalities.
No comments on this one.
So next we come to policy 4209. So that is the policy that we have implemented, the information in red that is stricken in this proposed policy is our current policy that was put into place as a result of state law at that time. And that state law no longer exists. So the option for Trune, from Trune, is to delete the writing that is the first paragraph. This says, "A district official or board member or district employee shall not refer a student for abortion or assist a student with obtaining an abortion as prohibition does not apply to a person who is the parent of that student." We can opt to maintain that policy if we want to, or we can opt to delete that policy as it's no longer required by state law.
Katie, you want me to stop, ready?
Yeah, so I think just my concerns with this are, it seems like talking medical advice, it seems like well, there's slippery slope, and then I also wondered with our liability insurance, if they would have any thoughts as well.
So you would opt to delete the policy that is now optional? Would that be your question?
So I'd see it, just because I think it's potentially maybe it's vulnerable for litigation and from medical advice, and then also I wondered with our school, you know, I don't know how all the insurance works, but with liability insurance, would it be appropriate to reach out to them as well to see what they're, you know, see? Because there's kind of different pockets, like there's the policy, and then also notifications. It may be feel uncomfortable based on what you could look into.
So Katie, you want to say something?
I mean, I would be curious to hear what lawyers have to say, or our jurors have to say about liability. And we'll also point out that this was a policy because it was the law. I understand the question, but it's no longer the law, the state law is getting a reason to keep it. The legislature has changed the law, it's a different part because of passage of property that abortion is now, abortion care is now, the trend under access to abortion care is the trend in our constitution. And I think it's trying to keep up with it. I guess my response was, we're not suggesting that we replace this with a policy that says teachers and staff should help students get an abortion. We are removing something that is no longer, there's no longer legal reason to keep it. And I would need an affirmative case for keeping it in here.
I feel like, sorry, Ian.
So you think we should keep this?
No, oh, no, I think we should remove this, I think we should remove this policy now that we no longer are required by law to keep this policy.
I feel the same way for this reason, that nowhere else do we single out another medical condition. And I don't like sending out abortion as one when we don't talk about any other medical condition in any other policy that is singled out like this.
And we certainly do when it's necessary, provide care to students or refer them to outside care. In an emergency, we're going to call, you know, an ambulance or we're going to give a band-aid. I recognize that this is not saying like the band-aid, and I understand the cultural conversation around this, but I don't like, I don't like signaling this out.
Me, that's the issue there. Now, I hear what you're saying with the discomforts. But since it's not required by law anymore, I would be more comfortable if we didn't.
You mean, they can go ahead?
I agree with that general idea that we don't specify throughout all of our policies about providing maintenance support. Which again, it's not really this certain providing support, it's informational. So I would, I would make it a reserve.
Yeah, it just be a reserve.
Reserve means that we could approve it later.
Yeah, it just holds the policy number.
Okay, thank you.
Katie, you want to add anything? I don't want to.
No, I would just say that I think that the idea that we don't hold any other medical support, that makes sense. But I do also agree that I think that if we were ever told by lawyers or jurors that that is something that we should have some type of policy around it, that it certainly will cover whatever we have.
So I think just by the nature of this, having the actual note, I think if you were extreme, you would say, do whatever you want. I'm not, yes, that's it, you know what would have effective is? And that would be our insurance, like our liability insurance carrier there. So I certainly could do that if you wanted to, or whatnot, either way.
What is the current, I know things are changing, so you're in flux right now, but for in sex ed portion of health, it used to be, couldn't talk about abortion, is that still the case? Because I know it was, I just didn't know if it had been changed.
Well, currently, I think it cannot, because again, this is new, I think in the curriculum, you cannot.
Yeah, it might be outdated curriculum now, but.
But I don't know that.
Well, I know they say here, you know, here's what I have read, it's been months, but so that was another thought, is are those two then in conflict? If, if in that class where that topic comes up, if that is not allowed, but then what is being removed? Does that make sense? So it's like education hasn't been provided, but the referral might happen?
So I guess for me, I feel like the curriculum will get caught up, right? So there'll be change because of new laws, we'll have a change in curriculum that will be approved in the process. And holding back our policy which shuts the tone because our curriculum is paying catch-up. Those laws change quickly. And okay, I would want our policy to shut the tone and not be the one that is paying catch-up after. I think the policy is at the top, right? So that's what sets the tone for the whole district. And I'm okay if the curriculum takes a little bit longer to catch up a bit. And I feel like this is the same way for the changes we're making to policy on that, say tobacco usage, that is culturally appropriate. We might have a little bit of catch-up sometimes, you know, feeling for that. And we've been okay with the rest, but I feel like this is, to me, no different than some of the aspects. I understand that the context. I understand that the context, the current context of this conversation is quite different than tobacco.
I just, what I remember Trump did is pretty mandated from the state, you know, what I'm taught, but so you just wouldn't, I hear what you're saying, but we want that mandated versus, you know, maybe this.
Any other discussions on this one? I suggest we move it forward and take a vote on it when we get to this, then we'll see and we could always choose to table that one.
Is there one that we could put separate so if we could be able, all before hundreds?
Yes, we just did it, we can have different motions.
Yeah, absolutely.
And one of the motions, if we have a second, could be to table that one only. This does definitely not.
So policy forty-two thirteen anti-nazism policy, a change in item three regarding the superintendent or designated removal of the designated.
I'm not going to make a change. Forty, what is this one, yeah, forty-two thirteen?
Forty-two thirteen anti-nazism.
Yeah, there's no comments?
Forty-two fourteen outside activities in employment. Again, those are just editorial changes with the parents slash guardians and paralyzed parents. Policy forty-two fifteen district acknowledging acceptable use policy. You can see there about midway down there are, there's some clarified language regarding requests for district records that must be promptly directed to the FOIA coordinator. Policy forty-two sixteen personal communication devices. Again, that is just the changes of parents slash guardians of parents.
We're moving.
Forty-two seventeen, same thing, social media, changes of parents slash guardians of parents.
So forty-two seventeen, not many changes here. We have no changes.
Okay, Jennifer, forty-two fifteen, why can't we learn the other thirty, thirty-one or twenty?
Well, I suppose it could be, although I would recommend not ever putting an employee's name in the policy, I, I would say position. Right, so I think we could, we could add superintendent there. I don't know that the superintendent will always be the FOIA coordinator, but that is a little that I've got for, for question. So I could certainly do that, we could add in superintendent there.
I'm just thinking about if I was a parent, if I was a parent who went to the policies, so FOIA coordinator, we didn't know what position I was, and they had to be so.
So would we want to say FOIA coordinator slash superintendent or FOIA coordinator or superintendent?
Discussions?
I'm also thinking that superintendent or designated persons, since they not already do.
Well, I, I would, I, I think that the key with this would need to have the FOIA coordinator title thing here.
I mean, if somebody calls the school, the district and asks FOIA coordinator, it's pretty easy to do that information thing.
Right, well, we, we can say or superintendent because certainly even if the superintendent wasn't the FOIA coordinator, he or she would know who is.
I agree. And how we've done that in others.
So are we comfortable with moving forward with that change policy? I don't think it's a substantial enough change that we need to. Forty-two twenty-one, we're getting there. Employee speech, again, that's just the changes of parents slash guardians of parents.
We have no such changes.
Forty-two twenty-eight, that is the policy regarding expectation of privacy and that's just a change in the legal section.
Yeah, and we have no questions or changes on this one.
Policy forty-four oh one, that's looking at definitions of professional staff. There's a change in the citation under B to the revised school code.
We do the mystery.
And then we get into the policies that under my report are in item four and five. So forty-four oh two R, the recommendation is just that we remove the R from that policy. There are under B, a few changes in language clarifying that collective bargaining agreement covers non-teaching professionals. So that example, that would be if our collective bargaining agreement covers folks like school psychologists, speech pathologists, which ours does, and so just add a little bit of language there.
Can we go back to the very, uh, decisions in the second sentence, okay? It has an FLC, it doesn't spell out what it is, so should we spell that out? I mean, I think I know what it means, but I don't know if it needs to be different K twelve, sure as I can be multiple FLCs.
Do you do that without?
I don't, I think so.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, no, that's, I mean, I think, again, anything that change like that is, it doesn't substantially change the meaning of the policy as practically other policies. Policy forty-four oh three R, again, we're asking to remove the R and then there's clarification of teacher record. Next we go into policy forty-four oh five. So there's policy forty-four oh five R and then right after that is policy forty-four oh five, the red strict, stricken policies, we're asking again, we would delete that policy and then removing the R from policy forty-four oh five R. You continue going through your packet, forty-four oh two assignment and transfer. Again, that FLC is completely struck through. And then we have forty-five, forty-four oh five R, which is an exception, of course, and that is the newer policy that we approved back in, back in January, you're going to go back on July one. There are some changes to the process in that. If you look under section C double I, you'll see some changes in the language where they've taken out some of those processes, that information will be further clarified in the collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, no questions on any of those under your, this year four or five?
Okay, so the next policy for approval would be policy forty-four oh eight, professional staff termination. And then again, just under C, there's a reference to non-teaching professionals. And then we go to forty-four oh nine R, forty-four oh nine. Forty-five oh three R, removing the R for performance evaluation. Forty-five oh three, performance evaluation, deleting that policy. Policy forty-five oh seven is administrative or supervisory determination. That paragraph found is a new paragraph that just references a collective bargaining agreement if a collective bargaining agreement exists.
Questions?
So I think based on our review from my notes, if the board is willing to, I believe that the policies in the two thousand, three thousand and four thousand series, with the exception of forty-one oh two and forty-one oh five, would potentially be visited or revoked under new business. We can look at the policy listed under my reporting, item four to be removed and then item five removing the R from the policy list.
I'd like to make a recommendation that in the interest of having most updated policy on the most as quickly as possible, we go ahead and approve or vote on whether or not to approve forty-one oh one or oh two or forty-one oh five and add, if you want to add introductory language later, I agree that that, I agree with the spirit of adding that language, but it's not essential and if you like, just maybe it becomes, it's all approved.
It's possible the work was already done, right?
Yeah, I agree with that.
If it's already approved, the paragraphs, which usually, then I think if we could just add it and if not, I agree with you.
We shouldn't hold it up.
I think the only thing would be that twenty-three oh three that is tied in with the policy. Because it just referred to that.
And so then we can revisit that, I guess.
We can go through a vote on forty-two oh nine, based on the vote that determines what we put in twenty-three oh three.
Okay, sounds fair.
Would you want to check with insurers, net income numbers? Let's decide this on the vote.
Yeah, I'm gonna move that we go on this tonight. So that's off my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to say, well, first, we did not vote on our policies, I just want to say we are fifty minutes, and I'm gonna continue to thank you all for the time that this takes. I know this is too useful for the audience and for us to go through, but I, I do really appreciate the work that we're doing and the knowledge that we gained by our knowledge of policy. We just need to really think about the conversation we just had tonight and the conversation we had a policy, what, three, four years ago, that was very different and that's because of our knowledge, like that we understand what our policies are, the background, what it means. And so I'm incredibly proud of us for this. I want to thank Jennifer for giving us the format of the policies that have the changes tracked out and track change under look. I know that was a big ask that we did and, but thank you, it made it a lot easier to review, I really appreciate it.
It is definitely, it is easier to follow, you know, thanks to Jennifer for preparing us for that today.
We appreciate all of that. Do we need, it's been two hours and it's good practice to offer board members a quick five-minute break if we need it before we move on and so if, I'm gonna look around, if you need it, let me know, we can take a quick minutes, otherwise, as we mentioned, we have to.
I think it was the things that left, we'll go over.
Yes, I know, but that's, that's supposed to be that, so I am. All right, so that moves us to our request of financial report.
We didn't have enough numbers yet, I have a little bit more, we may get closer. I have the general fund and special service funds revenue expenditure comparison reports for the long term in September for the school years twenty, two thousand twenty, twenty-one through two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. For the general fund, you see the revenue expenditures are pretty in line through all five years and the special service funds are in nature typically all of them, so they need to look a little bit. For retirement fund, on August thirty-first, we have beginning cash balance of seventy point four million dollars. We had these fees in the month of September for three point, almost eight million and dispersments of six point one million. That brings us a balance on September thirtieth of fifteen point one million dollars. The retirement fund on August thirty-first, we have beginning cash balance of two hundred and thirty-six thousand. We had some interest income in the amount of two hundred and twenty dollars and no dispersments for the month of September. That brings us a balance on September thirtieth of two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And for capital projects funds on August thirty-first, we have nineteen point seven million dollars. We had interest income in September of seventy-two thousand and dispersments of three point three million. That brings us a balance on September thirtieth of sixteen point five million dollars.
So that moves us on to correspondence, not seeing any, that moves us to the sentences where constitutional address of the board act being generated on agenda items. We do not have any at this point either, so that takes us to consent agenda. So the consent agenda starts with the approval of the minutes from the October seventh, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Subwooze.
Seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes. Next is the approval of bills. So that would be the approval of the bills to the sum of five million, oh, sorry, five million, five hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-five, or, yeah, sorry, two hundred seventy-five and thirty-eight cents. Is there a motion to, for the approval of bills?
Subwooze.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that passes.
Financial, okay, so. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the financial of the approval?
Subwooze.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is that a vocal? It's in case.
Oh, no, yes, okay.
Thank you, if you can say, no problem. The load has a thing to approve or not for policy, so let's start with section one, approval of the two thousand, that would be the twenty-four oh one, twenty-four oh five, twenty-five oh one, twenty-five oh four.
Subwooze.
Seconded.
All in favor? I have, any opposed? May you just accept on the twenty-three oh three? I didn't read that, that wasn't part of it, I kept that on the side.
Oh, I'm sorry, I called it.
That's okay. All right, then we have the three thousand series and I'll try to get it right and you can correct me if I mess up. Do we have an approval to, a motion to approve the policies thirty-one oh four, thirty-one oh five, thirty-one oh six, oh seven, oh eight, thirty-one eighteen, thirty-one nineteen, thirty-two oh seven, thirty-three oh one, thirty-three oh three, thirty-three oh six, oh seven, thirty-four oh two, thirty-four oh three, thirty-four oh six, thirty-four eight, and thirty-four ten. So do we approve this one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And the four hundred series, you can add the four oh one and four one oh five, that will let me check the paragraph, right? So do we have a motion to approve policy forty-one oh one, forty-one oh two, forty-one oh four, forty-one oh five, forty-one oh five A and B, forty-one oh six, forty-one oh seven, forty-two oh two, forty-two oh four, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-two thirteen, forty-two fourteen, forty-two fifteen, forty-two sixteen, forty-two twenty-one, forty-two twenty-eight, forty-four one, forty-five oh seven, and forty-six oh three.
Seven. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you everybody. Let's do the non-controversial things first. If we have a motion to approve the forty-four, the removal of policies forty-four two, forty-four three, forty-four five, forty-four eight, forty-four nine, and forty-five oh three.
Subwooze.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that we're moving the R from the policy, policies forty-two oh two R, forty-four oh R, forty-four five R, forty-four nine R, and forty-five oh three R.
Move that you remove the R.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to remove the policy forty-two oh nine?
Subwooze.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any.
So we do remove this one. So that's going to bring back whether we want to also approve that policy twenty-three oh three, which was contingent on forty-two oh nine.
I move that we remove the liability shift lead to abortion in that twenty-three oh three.
Any assignments, if you have one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any.
All right, thank you, everybody. Next, we have education.
In your board meeting this evening, you have an announcement from Annapolis High School, class of nineteen seventy-four. They are deleting a mention in memory of staff in
They are deleting a bench in memory of staff and classmates. And they removed the bench outside Mottles High School near the athletic entrance. The bench is valued at nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And they've been working with Josh to get the bench designed and ready and installed and all those great things. So we're, we're very grateful for this.
Do you have a motion to approve the donation?
So on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you. Whether you feel good. Do we have a motion to approve the scholarship that was presented to us tonight?
I move that we approve this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and I hope you have a good one. And then our last item of new business is to vote on the recommendation of the vital modification and the appointment of the student representative on the sex ed advisory board. Do I have a motion to approve vote? So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
This passes as well.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the sex ed advisory board to appoint a student representative.
I move that we can put it on the cross of the student representative to the sex ed advisory board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that does bring us to a board of education discussion.
Different person may just, they had a bell. They could come back and let us know. Is there experience or email or give something, I think it would be.
Oh, no, we want to.
We want to slide chat.
I know that happens. I know CSO has an Instagram.
Oh, wow.
So I think it's just that he does not CSO.
So we can just follow along.
I can probably see where some of the signatures.
Awesome, thank you.
I'd like just to highlight the honor board that goes into the annual board. That is a lot of work. And you can help, um, do you, how, she appreciates that process, so. Thank you, you thank your team for us. We're going through that stress, you never know.
I think it's a great pride that we have in our district that our financial transparency, and I love that about us. I love that. The audience, we, I've never worried about audits, and I know that a lot of boards are quite different. I feel super lucky with the team that we have, the work that we do. So it's, uh, we appreciate it.
Jen had mentioned our, our rating by Moody's, right? All of this ties in to, it shows that we are a very strong foundation. So that goes back to transparency and everything, so.
Every time you want a bond, we're able to show what we've done and what we already received from our community. That's awesome.
I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of this Thursday evening. They have these parent teacher conferences and family engagement, Mottles Middle School. And they have all sorts of really fun, amazing things planned. So, you know, the hope is that if you're a parent or a family that wouldn't typically come to conferences, maybe you don't have any concerns, you don't feel like you need to see parents, or to see your students, teachers, still to come to the event, they've got a lot of fun things going, all of the buildings. So it looks to be a really great night. I know they promoted in their way ads and on social media, so I just would encourage any Mottles Middle School family to attend. It's going to be a fun night.
I have some folks, the presentation notes more briefly at the conference. I took a little peek at the live, at the live show, and it looked amazing, and I was very impressed, so maybe I guess we'll get there again.
For the audience, we have our Mitchell Association of Schools Full Board Annual Event. It is Thursday to Sunday. We get to further our education, they offer all kinds of classes that we can take. We get to meet all kinds of board members from across the state, which is my favorite part. And because we don't talk about policies enough here, we decided to present the work we're doing here. Over there, so we can talk policies more. And four of us are presenting a kind of a highlight of our policy process. I wanted to take a minute to thank everybody that went to the Grapes and Greens. It feels like an October, it wasn't, I don't remember, so it was Thursday, Thursday that week. It was, I think, the biggest one I've attended in terms of attendance. It was really nice to see the support of our entire town. I would argue despite the election season, we had people from the entire political spectrum share a meal together in for students. And that kind of warmed my heart despite some of the controversies that we have, or the fact that we can give it back in town. So I really appreciated that, everybody that showed that support, you know, the work that we do. So a big thank you.
And I appreciated that to get to our slightly discounted.
Yes, that was nice.
They also gave free tickets to their building, so the principals could give them out to teachers as well, so, yeah.
I'm still glad we had a higher teacher representation.
I had one more, I noticed that the, I thought I heard Homecoming gave to our band, kind of their highest ranking in one of their band competitions.
So.
Last year.
Right, so after, the week, weekend before Homecoming was their first competition, and that was the highest ranking they received that early in the season. So they, I believe they finished second, and you know, they, they sort of improved with every competition. So to do that well that early on just really means, you know, good things for the band. And it's, it's a really fun, um, evening show. At Homecoming, since the halftime show was longer, they actually did their whole show after the football game. And our whole football team came out and sat and watched, they did all the cheerleaders. It just was really a great event together. They're having a wonderful season.
And I believe they have a concert tomorrow night.
It's wrong. Seven? Seven came, you know?
There's a play production, Emily Robinson, they're actually supposed to have that.
Super excited about that.
Well, thank you for reading this, it turns out me.